Third meeting at four thirty two. We have the regular meeting minutes, August first, twenty twenty three.
Make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sandy Beach lease extension. We were hoping to have a new lease with Sandy Beach, White Memorial and Sonno Litchfield by now. We're still waiting on some responses from White Memorial Board of Directors, I guess it is. So on the interim, we want to get this extension of our current lease through December thirty first of twenty twenty three. So we can continue on with firing out the details of the new lease with White Memorial and Towne Litchfield and Sandy Beach.
So you're just doing a motion to?
Yeah, it'll authorize me to sign it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Really, I think what it comes down to, there's just some minor details of what activities are allowed or what's not allowed on White Memorial property. It is their property that we, you know, lease. So, once we get that ironed out, hopefully, we can move forward. All those in favor? Refunds of payments, total of eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Appointments, we do have one, Maureen Doyle for Board of Assessment Appeals and determines.
Eleven eighteen twenty-five.
So filling a vacancy.
Who's on that board currently?
Richie Garrity and Eric F. Cook.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Of course, well, I was wondering if for six A, could we add, perfect timing, we have Janet Wilson here. Virginia Steinway now regarding the food pantry and the Munson House. Oh, that's right. Paul, you want to?
Make a motion to move six A. Ahead of the geese pens?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor? So Janet came up with a proposal. She wants to start, I'll let you get into it, but start to have a new group for the food pantry. That would utilize the Munson House next door.
Okay. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to give you our, our appeal. A lot of this is probably not news to you that food insecurity is not just an issue in the cities. And actually, the town of Morris is a little bit higher than Torrington at three point five percent. Torrington is at, I mean, thirteen, thirteen point five as opposed to Torrington thirteen point three. Obviously, they have more people, but that still leaves us with two hundred and eighty people that have trouble putting food on their table in Morris alone. And they're seniors, single parents, and even two people working on lower paying jobs and they have trouble. So for many reasons, they have trouble. When our seniors lose a spouse and only have one social security payment. Their household income has dropped in half. And I know that you have eighty-nine percent of the people owning their own homes here. But if they're owning their home and they have to pay bills with one income, it becomes very, very difficult. So our seniors, I know, were a big part of the people that come to the pop-up pantries. So I think we all agree there's a need and we're in the beginning stages of starting a nonprofit with a wonderful group of people we have. That are also very passionate about helping the problem of food insecurity. And we are requesting the use of what I call the Munson House next door to set up a food pantry to help. Our plan is to partner with Food Share, Food Hub and Food Rescue as valuable resources for low to no cost nutritional items to meet with the demand. For an example, getting off this a second, I know that Caring for Bethlehem, one week when I was talking to them over there. They received and took in that week twenty-four hundred pounds of free food for their folks that come to them. So I'm already in discussion with them and they're excited and they absolutely see the need in the area. And we are also, of course, as I mentioned, working with Rick Wood and Vera Rosa. With their successful program in Bethlehem called Caring for Bethlehem. And they've also said they're willing to give us a hand and they're a wonderful resource right next door. They've already spent time with me, showing me the steps that I'd need to do for the five oh one three C and to become a nonprofit. While we have a way to go in setting it up, as soon as we get it just a speck further in the process, we can think about getting in the building if it works. And getting set up. I anticipate moving in the freezers from Morris Friends and Neighbors. They explained to Mr. Ialo here that we could have them as they were purchased and donated to them for the purpose of a pantry. And I've talked a speck with our first selectman here and he was going through the house with me at one point with the group about things that could be done. I have a few little, little things at some point if this works that we could talk about. And I really appreciate the work the town crew has already done to the property. We're also asking perhaps if there are any ARPA funds still available to make the building handicap accessible with a ramp. Although we do not plan on having clients come into the building and only people that are working go in and bring this stuff out to them. We still have to get in with heavy bags and things and we might have lots of seniors during the day that might use a cane or need that assistance. As far as town traffic goes, we see the pantry at this time having two pickup days. Those days and times would be chosen based on the availability of the clients that need services. I want to see what works for most people. Staggering times when it meets their needs, perhaps a late afternoon and a weekend time as well. So two different, maybe, maybe bi-weekly handouts. We have an ordering process. We will have an ordering process on a general form that's turned in the week before for the families. So they know in advance what they're going to need and we can anticipate and get things that we might need. By letting us know ahead of time that they need help with things, we can have those bags ready for people and they're not waiting long to get them. And being open maybe two or three hours on one of those days. We can stagger their times and give two or three people, let's say, two o'clock. And we can meet their needs and then two fifteen, there's a few more coming in. So they're not all coming at once and waiting in the parking lot to come through. Part of our vision is to have a trusted liaison for our seniors and shut-ins, offering them a list of items such as produce, milk, meat, cheese, very generalized. And a pickup time the next week. And we also already have people that have said that they would deliver to them if they can't get out. Dignity is a, I wrote big, but I'm going to say huge part of helping people, not just our seniors and. You know, they've done so much all their lives and they're very proud and they don't necessarily come willingly, I think. We are learning ourselves, but we want to set this up to meet the public need and be safe. We want people to know they can trust us and we are here to help. We absolutely plan to adhere to any building codes, Torrington area health, food handling regulations that there may be. And above all, we see this as a great opportunity to bring the people of Morris together, to bring the issue of food, to help with the issue of food insecurity. And we're confident that we will have absolutely no issue finding people that want to help and be a part of this. I know this community will come and help. And we look forward to keeping the first selectmen and the selectmen informed as we move along. That's my, my appeal.
Is it separate from Friends and Neighbors? This is?
Yes, yes, nothing, the two organizations are completely.
There is no more Friends.
At all?
Well, just a snack pack program.
It's doing different things. It's not doing a food bank anymore.
So they're not going to do a food bank?
No.
Ever again?
No.
And I've actually resigned from that group.
Okay. Is this just going to be fresh food? Is that?
If we partner with Food Hub, we get produce from the farms. Food Rescue, we get items from the stores mainly. And Food Share will give us all kinds of items. There may be, you may be familiar or not with the generic foods that used to come years ago. Like a silver can with black writing on it and things, canned meats and things as well. That helps.
Shelf scribbles.
I will also get frozen foods and it will be already divided. We used to get one pound packages of hamburger from some of our helping partners that we had over there. And small sized things that we can hand out.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds good. I know we mentioned to Friends and Neighbors about the insurance. Do you think that'll be an issue for you?
No.
Providing that?
Nope.
Our organization would require us to have liability and officers and directors insurance.
Yeah, they'd have, definitely name the town of Morris and the location, you know, for the activity. Handicap access, I don't think it's going to be a huge problem. I think. You know, it'd be nice to have that anyways at that building if we're going to continue to utilize it different ways. I think that's doable probably with ARPA funds like you suggested. I think there will be some. We actually have a balance, I think about eighteen thousand that we did not designate to anything yet. So there is monies available and I don't know if we go with aluminum type of thing or we go a little more, you know.
I think, I think right now you're looking for a commitment that the building will be available to you guys.
Well, the commitment lets me do some more paperwork. I kind of, you know, I have a bunch of people that are very interested and willing to help. But before I get going on all of this massive paperwork for the nonprofit itself, I need to know I have a home. And I can't do it without a couple of rooms.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all kind of contingent on each other, right? Like the commitment barring the insurance and that needs to happen. So. As long as it's absurd, I think it's a good thing. I think it's a good use of that building, certainly.
And then moving forward, anything that you need, you would go to Tom to coordinate like the insurance. Coordinate like a handicap ramp that would all go through Tom because he would have the connection to.
We'll have to draft up like a, a simple lease.
Yeah.
Buying everything that's required on both parties and, you know, probably an exit clause with a sufficient timetable for both parties. Say, you know, Tom moves in a different direction and want to tear the place down, you'd need to have plenty of time to know. No plans of that yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would need to have another build. Yeah.
Because it'd be a relationship between a five oh one C three and the town of Morris. So everything would be nice and neat and clean and nobody will be upset.
But it would have to be a big emergency, I'm sure, on your part to say no more food pantry anyway.
Right.
So it would be something that's really important and takes precedence.
So should you, Tom, draft a pending lease and they can have that further filling out their application?
What do you need?
Well, I think I have to get to the point where I have the EIN number and a bank account. And then I can move forward. I mean, if you say, if you vote yes now, then I will start writing.
Yeah, we could, if we vote yes, it could give you documents stating that the intent of the town is to allow you to utilize the space that twelve North Street.
That'd be great because we can, the church is no longer feasible.
Yeah.
And being in the center of town is really important. And just swing in the parking lot and there's lights and the safe and it's, you know, it's an ideal location. I can't imagine where we would go if it wasn't available.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to Tom write a letter authorizing the pending approval of your use for that building for contingent on insurance. And five oh one C three status.
All right, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You can move forward.
Lots more.
And we'll chat. Maybe I can move the building at some point. When I say small, I mean it's small. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's tackle the horse town beach geese, or geese sounds, I guess. So I talked with Sean Hayden. Do you remember who he was with? I just can't. Worked up at Tarrant, NRCS, Northwest Conservation District. That was it. He used to be part of that. Really, really smart guy. And now he's down, I believe, in, with Lake Warmog. And so I reached out to him, given his background, asked him about this whole deal with having a barrier for the geese at the Warren Beach. And they ended up installing it down there. It's a series of bushes. I believe the bushes are Inkberry.
And install it and then do a move it? Was there a lot of drama surrounding?
There was a little drama, but they got over it. I think after they realized what it was doing.
I think it was like a sightline for parents watching kids.
Exactly. And they have a lot shorter beach there too. So if the parents want to sit up on the grass and watch their kids wait down below, uh, Morris Beach is a lot bigger. So she came up with a plan. Oh, he recommended this person from Warren, Kip Lundberg. And they did install it at Warren, highly successful. It's not one hundred percent, but she's probably says it's about ninety-five percent. Occasionally, geese will come in and be on the beach for a little while, but they no longer go up in the grass. They just, they want to be able to see a place where they can land at the beach and go up into the grass. If they can't see the grass, they don't want to hang out there, apparently. So her plan was about a hundred and fifty foot length row of bushes with a couple gates there for the people to pass through. They have to be self-closing gates because you want to maintain that barrier all the time, that sightline for the geese.
Is the gate kind of like where the beach starts? It's kind of?
Yeah, it's kind of, well, it's hard to tell this.
Looks like it's in the middle of the beach.
No, this row of bushes, it's like at the top of the beach where the grass line is. And it would go right across in front of the swing set on the west side. And it would go down to the kayak location that's kind of to the east of the volleyball nets. And so there'd be a gate down there so people could drag their kayaks through the gate. There'd be a double gate in the middle so you can get emergency vehicles down to the water and people could access.
Okay.
Through there as well. If needed, we could always think about maybe a third single gate more towards the swing set on the west side, but. Ran this past Kristen and she reached out to a number of her recreation commission members and they're all very much in favor of it. So Kip came up with a number with a good, very good price on the bushes themselves and with the town doing the trenching for this town crew. I think you have it there in front of you.
Yeah, the total is ten thousand two eighteen.
Yes, looking to pull five of that out of each maintenance, five thousand. And I believe the balance from Lozep would cover the rest of that, the five thousand two eighteen. I don't know if there's going to, there'll probably be some cost to the gates themselves, which the town crew will put in.
Yeah.
But she wants to get it installed fairly soon before this planting season would end.
Yep.
I have a meeting. I just reached out to Mike Doyle for Wetlands for next, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, I believe. To see what they think and what they want. If this is something we want to do. But like I said, the Recreation Commission was kind of excited because, I told Vinnie earlier, there's a gate workers down there. It was down there one morning. She spent over three hours picking up droppings.
Yeah, it's a problem everywhere.
And see how it works. I, I think, you know, it worked very well at Washington or Warren. We have the same motion.
Please, I'll make that motion. The thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars?
Yes.
Do we have to put down where the money is coming from in the motion?
I have the line items, but you could say beach maintenance.
Beach maintenance and Lozep.
Okay, there will be additional costs for the gates.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how much, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor? Very good. Thank you. Can we add? Would it be six B message sign?
Sure. I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Second, all those in favor? So the message sign, we put out a while ago, I reached out to one, two, three, five different companies in Connecticut. That do this type of sign, electronic signs. I got two responses, two quotes proposals. One was from Sinorama. I believe they're out of Danbury. And that one was Laura Tonno Sign Group. You know, we put out the request for proposal with certain specifications on it and all that. Sinorama initially didn't come back with the whole posts and everything that would hold the sign. I reached back out to them and say, hey, you know, we need that as well. And they did come back with that. Theirs ended up being twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Did look at what they quoted. I looked at what Laura Tonno quoted based on our RFP. I did find Sinorama had a smaller font to their letters as would be lit. And they're using a different board itself. We specified optic. They have a watch fire. So those were the only two different things I could find. Laura Tonno came in at thirty-three thousand six thirty-one sixty-three. So you're looking at about a.
What's the difference between the boards, the two types of boards?
Different maker. So you're looking at twenty-eight, say twenty-nine thousand, so four thousand five hundred or so difference between the two.
Did either one have a timeline of when they could get it installed?
They both said they could get it done fairly quickly. I think supplies are not really much of an issue anymore. You weren't able to see those before, but. So that's all I, you know, that's the only differences I could really find between the two ones versus the specs that we put out there for the RFP. I think the character size we were looking for was four point four inches. They had, I believe, four inches under us. I don't know if you remember it. It's what, kind of a little thing that, this is what they came up with or town as far as a legal word. Which we can still modify. A little humor there.
Yeah.
You know, the only thing I would say is sometimes the lower price, you know, is the best way to go. I mean, we know what the Laurentons work, their, their work that they do and are local. We don't know about, you know, I'm sure they're a reputable company, but we haven't seen any of their work. So, so it's a matter of.
Should we designate from, I'm sorry, for ARPA?
Good question. Twenty-five thousand, so it would be over. Either way, we're out.
We're all okay.
Do we have?
Yeah.
File of money somewhere?
Well, and I'll get into that. Yeah, there will be enough money to cover that and more. We have the eighteen thousand two fifty that we did not designate to anything. Plus, I believe we're going to have some monies left over from various projects like this, that, AC. We'll have funds available.
I, to Vinnie's point, would like to see Laurenton get the, that because they've done the sign above the door. They did the one out front.
They did the farmhouse, didn't they do?
They donated quite a bit and they're here if we have a problem and we know that they, they're likely will be in.
Well, in form of motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Laurenton gets the bid for, I don't remember.
Thirty-three and change.
Thirty-three, six thirty-one, sixty-three. I'll give Laurel that.
All right.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appointments, correspondence, I don't know if you all have anything. I just have like a quick little update on various projects. You probably well know, East Shore Road Culver is complete. Did a very nice job in a very short period of time over there. It was a lot quicker than I thought it would be. There's still some more finishing work to be done there. They expected to put down the first, the first course of payment is to be put down on Thursday. Where the culvert was. And S and S is going to do that. And that's in preparation for them milling up to that point and then repaving right across. So it'll be all brand new pavement, which should begin next week, paving of East Shore Road. We hope to get the guardrails installed as well. We wanted to go with a little more natural wood beam, but because of the span there on that corner, we can't do that. I think it's going to end up being a metal beam. The wood beam like they have down on near Whistle Road, Whiteswoods Road. Unfortunately, we can't do that. The HVAC units have been installed in our operational, both the firehouse and the community hall meeting room. And I did put out a little post on Facebook today that this place is available, library is available if people are too hot. Because we're open eight to eight for, until through Friday. So people need it, they can come on in. Of course, we have the bathrooms and charging stations. Firehouse parking lot is currently being torn up and getting prepped to be repaved. And do some improvements there with the underground propane line from the new underground tank. Then the leader drains off the roof or never put, well, two of them weren't put underground previously. So now those will go underground. Trying to get as much done there while it's open, so we don't have to dig that up again in thirty, forty years. I did apply for a steep grant for John Wyke Road Bridge. I applied for the maximum amount would be five hundred thousand dollars. Hopefully, when you hear back, I, hopefully by the end of October on that. The last two concerts, the Morris Town Beach were both a huge success. I believe there was one Monday, last Monday. It was the Grateful Dead Tribute Band. Place I heard was packed. I didn't make it to that one. I did go Friday night. That place was jam-packed, parking up and down the road. It was very well attended. And speaking of the beach, I did apply for a swim area application for the town beach. It's been submitted with all the supporting documents. And I just threw, kind of threw that on that little, can't really see it. It's about, you go. If you're looking at the lake, ten feet off our left-hand border, it would start, goes out fifty feet, goes across a hundred and fifty feet and back in fifty feet. It also allows room at the far right side for boats to come up. Just had so many problems with various boats and personal watercraft coming in with kids swimming there. So that's in DEEP's hands right now. And I didn't have anything else. You guys have anything? Anyone online? Hand up. No? No? Okay.
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. At five oh two, all over the favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Early release.